Bringing in the colors by Mission Hospice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to Mission Hospice and to Mary Chigas, perennial board member of Mission Hospice, a fantastic organization.
Thank you, Mayor, but a pleasure it is here to be with you. We have all my team here. My name is Mary Chigas. I'm a board member and a registered nurse and nurse practitioner that does outreach at Mission Hospice. I'd like to introduce the people with me. We have Bob Rowe, who is our board chair. We have Patricia Matthews, who you all know well because of her husband, Jack, who is our very honored volunteer this year. Marcia Edelman is our chief of development. And we have Dolores Gomez, who is our CEO. So we're well represented.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here. I'd like to say a few things if you don't mind.
Please.
I have always respected your organization, but direct care volunteers are unique caring individuals from many walks of life who volunteer their time each week to visit patients who are in the last months, weeks, and days of life. The direct care volunteer visits their patient where they live. It could be in their home, skilled nursing facility, board and care facility, or at the agency's Mission Hospice house. The role of the volunteer is to bring important emotional and social support. This comes in the form of companionship, compassion, care, comfort, and presence. They will listen to stories from the patient, bring a calm, non-anxious presence, provide respite for the caregiver, do activities, but mostly provide undivided presence to the patient. Patricia Matthews is beginning her 18th year as a Mission Hospice direct care volunteer. Patricia has always gone far and above the expectations. She has primarily served the Italian community patients, finding that helping those who speak Italian and bringing their culture to them is where she does her best volunteering, whether she is playing Italian opera music, sharing pictures of Italy, or bringing Italian pastries and food. Patricia knows exactly how to bring charm and joy to all she visits. She embodies the feeling of family and brings a piece of the old country to each patient on each visit. And I have been the recipient of that tremendous hospitality. Thank you so much, Patricia. On behalf of the entire city and the city of San Mateo and the council, I have this certificate of special recognition for Patricia Matthews, recipient of the 2020 Mission Hospice and Home Care Special Recognition Award. Thank you so much for all you do, Patricia.
(applause).
you. Most of you know, and you have well expressed, my commitment to, passion for, and belief in hospice care, specifically Mission Hospice. It's about life, is our motto. I am not a doctor, I am not a nurse, I am not a social worker, I am not a chaplain. I am a Mission Hospice volunteer. I can be present with my patient, I can actively listen, I can hold a hand most tenderly, I can love generously, I can read to my patient, I can pray with my patient, I can play music, and I've been known to make special meals for my patients also. Each of us volunteers brings our own total person and our skills and our talents with us. As Joe mentioned, I speak several languages, and I have had the pleasure and privilege of being with French patients and many, many, many Italian patients. Now, we know that people very often at the end of their life either revert to their native tongue, or sometimes just merely feel more comfortable talking in their native tongue. It can be a great comfort. It also helps that I have the culture, knowledge of the traditions, I've grown up with them, so that we can establish very quickly a connection, and it is all about relationship and trust. I have learned that every patient has a story to share. Sometimes they want to, and very often they need to. They want to affirm that their life has made a difference, that it has mattered that they have been on this earth. And sometimes the families have gotten just a little bit tired of hearing some of these stories over and over again. So for fresh ears to hear it and be excited and affirm that they have loved and that they have been loved means everything to them. Death has so much to teach us about life. I have learned lessons and gleaned much wisdom from everyone of my patients. It is quite spiritually and physically powerful to be present, to witness death. I always say that coming into the world is hard work. We call it labor. Departing from this life can be challenging also. I often say that I fall in love with my patients. Now, some are much more lovable than others. Some approach this time in their life with great fear and anxiety. Others are much calmer. I want to tell you that yesterday I went to the memorial service for my adorable treasured patient. I've had her for a year. When she came to me, she was 99, and her greatest goal was to live to be Cent'anni, which Italians want to be 100 years old. She began on our transitions program, which can be a prelude to hospice care. She was just a little bit suffering from debility. She turned 100 on November 13th and was so joyful, and her whole family celebrated with her. A week after that, she went on hospice care. The will to live is very powerful, and she achieved everything she wanted. She wanted to live to be 100, and she wanted to die in her own home. This woman did not have an easy life. She met all her challenges, and she did not look at what she lost. She always looked at what she had, which was an incredible lesson I hope I can follow. She had a loving family, and she passed with about 15 people around her bedside. This is what Mission Hospice does. I am very proud and very honored to be a part of this wonderful community. I cannot imagine my life without it, and I thank you for this recognition, which recognizes hospice volunteers everywhere. Thank you all.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that. Patricia, did you take some of my papers there? Well, thank you for giving me just a few minutes. I wanted to say a little bit about Mission Hospice. For those that are not familiar, certainly listening to what Patricia has to say gives you a huge idea of what hospice is all about and what Mission Hospice is all about. I particularly am very proud to be a 47-year member of San Mateo area, so I feel like I'm a long-term resident that's very proud of this town and everything that's accomplished. Raised my children here, and I've been a part of Mission Hospice since 2002. I was an OB-GYN and then decided to switch a few years ago and went into geriatrics, so I think I've been to both ends of the world here. Like she said, there's labor, and then there's the other. Mission Hospice was founded by three women from San Mateo, for many people who don't know that, and they were women who had supporters in the community also, and that was in 1979. They saw the need for quality care and compassionate for supporting families with end-of-life issues. It's a local independent organization, and we serve 15,000 people in this community with Mission Hospice, with physical, emotional, and spiritual support through diagnosis, death, and bereavement. We now are caring for six times as many patients and families than we did 10 years ago. As a nonprofit organization, our bottom line is patient and family care, and we rely on the generosity of our community to support and help us serve people regardless of their ability to have medical coverage or the ability to pay. Our programs together provide a continuum of care designed to serve patients and their families at every stage. We meet them when they're first diagnosed, or they have questions, and we care for them until they pass away, and then support their families after. The core of our work remains with people throughout the last years, that's transition and hospice care, and the Hospice House, which I would just like to share with you, that is the only hospice house in San Mateo County. I'm not sure how familiar you are with those in the back east. They have them, many, many of them. There's very few in California. We were the first to have one in San Mateo County. Mission House provides a peaceful, home-like setting for patients at the end of life whose comfort cannot be managed in their own home. Most patients on hospice die in their own home. This is an alternative for people that don't have that opportunity because their care exceeds what can happen in the home. Our interdisciplinary team is designed to meet the patient's medical, emotional, and spiritual needs as they develop and change over the course of their illness. Patients move between the programs, as Patricia mentioned, the transition program, hospice program, and their illness either progresses or improves. Donations and grants help support patients not covered by insurance or Medicare, or when insurance doesn't cover the actual cost of delivering quality care, which is often true. A gift to Mission Hospice directly helps patients and families, often right here in our local community. And I want to thank publicly all the people that have supported Mission Hospice over the years and cared for so many families. Our 41st anniversary celebration will be at Peninsula Golf and Country Club this Sunday. We're honoring, first of all, Sheila Young, who's the recipient of the 2020 Lotus Award. This award's given to an individual who has shown outstanding support of Mission Hospice. Sheila has served as a board member from 2006 to 2019. She served as board chair both 2010 and 2011. She served as executive committee, development committee, nominating committee, and as a volunteer. She's a longtime member of the Peninsula Italian-American Committee that has continued to organize the annual Night of Fun Dinner Dance that benefits Mission Hospice and patients and families. If you've never been to it, it's a lot of fun. The Italian-American Committee started this 11 years ago, and every year they say no more, and every year they do it again. Sheila has given up her time, her talents, and both she and her husband, Jim, have been continually generous with their home. As stated by the first Lotus Award recipient, Adela Harris, her open-hearted philanthropy has been bottomless. She has done so much to advance the mission of our agency and done it with grace and humor. Our special recognition this year will be presented to Patricia Matthews. For the past 17 years, Patricia has participated and served as a direct care volunteer, companioning patients at the end of life. Volunteers are often referred to as the heart of hospice. These individuals give, volunteer, their time and their heart to patients. The hospice team, the nurses, social workers, home health aides, spiritual care members, each have a role to play in the physical, spiritual, and emotional care for the patients. The volunteer is unique. The volunteer visits the patient and is present for quiet times, offering companionship, listening to stories, reading, listening to music together. It's a special time with a special person. Patricia has been this special person for so many patients over the years. Her smile and joyful self can light up a room. We are honored to celebrate Patricia and her family in the many hours and days over the last 17 years that she's brought the light and comfort to patients and their loved ones. Thank you.
Mary, thank you, and thank your organization, Mission Hospice, which does so much great work, and one more round of applause for your organization and for Patricia Matthews. (applause). I'm going to turn it over briefly to Councilmember Lee.
I was so glad to see this, that we made time on the agenda to honor the work that you're doing, and I just wanted to say that from my experience sitting with the dying and doing hospice volunteering, it was one of the greatest lessons in my life. And for those of you out there listening and watching, if you have a hand and if you have eyes, you can do this work too. It doesn't take more than that, just sitting and being present and holding another person's story and opening your heart. It is a spiritual renewal opportunity. It's something that all of us can do, and I just wanted to put it out there that this is a great organization to get involved with.
Well said. Thank you so much to all of Mission Hospice, and good luck with your event this weekend. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Pappin?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Goethals?
Here. Would you please read the consent calendar?
Again, with pleasure. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number two, Fiscal Year 2019-20, Property Tax in Lieu of Vehicle License Fee Shortfall, Letters to Assemblymember Mullen and Senator Hill. And for the record, please note that they are revised and in front of you on the dais with a date change. Item number three, Fiscal Year 2018-19, Community Development Block Grant, Street Rehabilitation Project Contract. Item number four, Juvenile Diversion Program Case Management Services Agreement for Services and Amendment to Reimbursement Agreement. Item number five, Personal Computer Replacements Master Purchasing Agreement. Item number six, Building Inspector Mutual Aid Agreement. Item number seven, On-Call Transportation Analysis Reports for Various Projects Agreements. Item number eight, Instrumentation and Controls Technician Workshop Design and Construction Agreement. And item number nine is the Downtown Parking Technology Project Agreement.
Is there any member who would like to pull an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to pull an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second. There's a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent calendar passes unanimously. Now is the time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. Is there anyone here wishing to speak during public comment?
I have no speakers left.
Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and move on to our agenda. The next item on the agenda, Old Business, item number 10. I believe we have a presentation from Sean Mason, our city attorney, and that is queued up now.
I think the city manager's going to kick it off.
I'll kick it off briefly. The item before you, Mayor, members of the City Council, is an update on Senate Bill 50. Just as, by way of background, in April of 2019, council authorized the mayor to send a letter opposing Senate Bill 50, which I'll refer to as SB 50. The reasons cited amongst other were its one-size-fits-all approach, the loss of local control of land use, and the lack of consideration of local housing production. There's recently been an amended version of SB 50 introduced. It was originally set for a Senate Appropriations Committee vote on Thursday, which is why it's in front of you tonight. However, as of last Friday, the Senate President Pro Tem reassigned the bill to the Rules Committee to facilitate the bill getting on the Senate floor. So there's some additional time, but we wanted to go ahead and hear it tonight. Senator Hill's office reached out to us, and all cities in his district requesting feedback on the amended legislation. And so with that, I'll turn it over to City Attorney Sean Mason to give some background on the amended bill.
If I may, it's the request from Senator Hill that is the reason that it's before us tonight.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, City Attorney.
I'll briefly go through the big, high-level overview of the previous version of SB 50, and then conclude with what changed in January. So the two big concepts are streamlined ministerial processing for what are referred to in the statute as neighborhood multifamily projects, and then a concept called equitable community incentives. So the first one, what is a neighborhood multifamily project? In order to qualify, it has to be located in an urbanized area of the city. The site has to be zoned or planned for residential uses. And then if a site qualifies under those categories, then what occurs is an override of local zoning to allow up to four units per lot if the parcel is vacant, or there is conversion of an existing structure not requiring a substantial exterior alteration or a substantial increase in square footage, and those terms are defined in the statute. And the project must meet applicable objective standards. So that's what one of those projects are, and then the streamlined ministerial process. What that means is that it starts with, if someone makes a request for the process, the city has 60 days to determine if the project meets those statutory standards for a neighborhood multifamily project. And if it doesn't satisfy that determination within 60 days, then it's deemed to meet those standards. And the statute provides that the process may, optional, go to the Planning Commission or City Council. It is ministerial, which means there's no discretion to deny if it meets the standards, so you have to consider that in terms of whether you want to set it up so it goes to the commission or the City Council. And then there's this substantive provision that one of these projects, the city may only impose a parking requirement of .5 spaces per unit. The statute does provide for a public health and safety exception, but that would be pretty difficult to meet that requirement for the exception. Now turning to the equitable community incentives. It's loosely modeled after the density bonus law, where that, under density bonus law, a developer can get additional density above and beyond what's allowed under the localities of rules. And under the equitable community incentive, certain projects are entitled to local zoning override on rules with respect to density, height, floor area ratio, and parking. To qualify, the project must be a multifamily housing project. The site needs to be zoned to allow housing, and the project must comply with inclusionary requirements, either in the statute or with local requirements, if there are local requirements, and we do have them in San Mateo. In order to qualify, the site has to be either a transit-rich or jobs-rich area, and I'll go into that, what those terms mean, in a moment. If it is, it meets those criteria, then there's a waiver from density limits. That means there are no limits on density for the project, and waiver for any parking requirement that is greater than .5 spaces per unit. Transit-rich means located within one-half mile from a major transit stop, think Caltrain for San Mateo, or quarter mile from high-quality bus corridor, think about El Camino Real as an example in San Mateo. This is not working very well. Jobs-rich is the other concept, and that's actually going to be established by the Department of Housing and Community Development, based upon consultation with the planning. Yeah, if you can go back one. And jobs-rich is basically, the concept is an area where there's opportunities for jobs at all income levels, and it's going to be determined by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. We can expect that there are areas in San Mateo that would meet the qualifications of a jobs-rich area. And then there are special rules, in addition to the parking rules and the elimination of any density limits, that are based on proximity to major transit stops. If the site is less than a half-mile but greater than a quarter-mile, the project also is entitled to a 45-foot height limit and a 2.5 at floor area ratio. If the site is within a quarter-mile of a major transit stop, it's entitled to a 55-foot height limit and a 3.25 floor area ratio. That's what the bill proposed up until January, and basically that is still what is being proposed in the bill, except for the following, it's outlined in this slide. The implementation of those rules has been delayed for two years, and over the next two years, the state will come up with a process and program by which cities can apply for what's called local flexibility plans that basically accomplish the aims of the statute, increasing density around transit and job-rich areas in other ways. And basically, you might over-concentrate in one area so you don't have to spread it out throughout the whole transit-rich or jobs-rich area. In order to be able to apply the local flexibility plan, the city will have to demonstrate to HCD that the amount of housing allowed by the local plan would equal or exceed the amount under the standards we just talked about. And again, they must be approved by HCD. And another addition in the bill is that it provides for neighborhood preference for inclusionary housing units. So the options for council's consideration are to continue to formally oppose SB 50, to rescind that opposition but take no position, to rescind the opposition and support the amended version of SB 50, or to receive tonight's update and take no action.
Any questions from council members? You don't have to.
Really quickly, SB 50 wouldn't apply to all counties, right?
There are different, less intrusive requirements for counties of less than 600,000 people. So there are a different set of rules for smaller counties, and they're not as intrusive in terms of the standards that would apply.
And it's smaller population-wise, not necessarily land-wise?
That's right. Population.
Okay.
Do we have, do you have any information about how the, what is it called, the ECI standards? I missed it, or whatever the equivalent are. How does that relate to, like, RENA requirements incoming? Are they going to be coordinated, or are they going to be just completely different? Or do we know, do we have any information about that?
I don't know. I suspect that what will happen is you'll do the calculation of what the requirements are within an area, and then that would sort of give you your delta for your RENA. And so the RENA would sort of be a higher-level requirement, superimposed on the ECI level.
So if this passes, then RENA would, what would take, what would be the?
I think you have to satisfy both, and potentially you could have a RENA number that's lower than what is yielded by applying the ECI standards, or the other way.
Okay. But I guess, so then, we not knowing what the standards are going to be, or even how some of these various areas are going to be, like, what is a job-rich zone? I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be all of San Mateo, but we don't know for sure. That could change, and the same thing with the disadvantaged zones, or whatever the term was. So there's still a lot of unknowns here that will be figured out later, after it passes?
That's right. Okay.
Any other questions before public comment? I don't see any. How about public comment? Do we have any public comment on this issue?
No, sir.
No public comment. I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. And this was, again, this was on the agenda because Senator Hill asked us for some feedback. I'm still studying the differences between this and last year's bill. This looks like it's getting better, but I don't know how I feel about it yet. I would propose that we rescind our formal opposition at this point, but take no position, and continue to work with Senator Hill and Assemblymember Mullins' staffs to make sure that we're comfortable with anything that gets in there, or at least engaged to make it better to the extent that we can.
If I may, I think it's improved since last year, and I think it's in the, actually in the process of being improved. It was moved, as Sean said, from the Appropriations Committee to the Rules Committee, so that it could be further amended, and I think it's being examined. Some of the questions that we brought up here tonight, such as the unknowns, are, those are good questions. People know that, and these are things that are being worked on right now. I don't think it would come as a surprise to anybody, though, if I say tonight that I actually think that they have actually moved it in the right direction, in view of the fact that, well, for instance, in 2001, when I started working on the Bay Meadows development planning, we had a housing shortage then. It's only grown worse, right? And nothing that we seem to be doing here on the peninsula is adequately addressing this issue. We've been, I think, missing targets for decades now. And this proposes a way to get where we need to be by, you know, looking at it through a reasonable lens, real projections made scientifically about what we can expect to see, given business growth, given population growth. We already have way more business than we have any business having. People are living so far away. We're not providing a really good equity for people that are having a tough time getting by. Usually, those people live so far away, are the people that don't make enough to live anywhere near here. That's why they live so far away. We tried to help by raising the minimum wage, and it's a good thing that we did. And now what, five other cities in the county have followed with that? It was an important thing, but it's not enough, right? So right now, I would be happy to say that I support this, and I know that it's going to be amended further, but I support it because I think it's going the right way. And if nothing else, when the RENA numbers do come out, now, I'm on the Housing Methodology Committee day bag. I can tell you something. In Los Angeles County, they're on a different cycle two years earlier than us. They saw 329% in their increase in their RENA numbers.
That's a lot.
Yeah, so we can expect to see, I think, an increase. And like Sean said, RENA could cause us to build more, or, and the Fair Housing Act, or SB 50 could cause us to build more or less. We don't know which way that's going to work, okay? It's a huge calculation for the entire nine-county Bay Area, right? But we have to do something. That's my whole point of view here. We have to do something.
Thanks, Rick.
Just a couple of quick comments. I agree with Rick that this is a step in the right direction. I probably know where this is going, but I would probably prefer that we keep our opposed position until we learn more to change it to either neutral or pro. So that's just my.
Mr. Mayor, I would concur with Councilmember Rodriguez. I do agree with Councilmember Bonilla that we do have a serious problem. I did some thoughts, if you'll bear with me a little bit here. I think it's worth noting that the San Francisco Board of Supervisors actually opposed this bill 10 to 1, even with its recent amendments. So it gives you some idea of what the bill does to cities. And I think there, for me, there are still some important reasons why we should continue to oppose the bill. Number one is I think it is inequitable. That's why I asked the question, especially when it comes to Marin County. I agree with Councilmember Bonilla, we should not be having supercommutes. It's not good for people, for their own quality of life and well-being, and it's not good for an environment. And I really feel like Marin County is not a supercommute to where we live here or work, excuse me, where we work. So I really, and with the advent of ferries, it may be even one of the better ways to commute to where jobs are. And whenever I hear about this bill, it's always, we need to put housing near where jobs are, and to exclude Marin County is something that is a real, real problem for me as it relates to this bill. I also think it's inequitable in that it's still not data-driven. You're hearing a lot about a jobs-housing imbalance as it relates to statewide data, but it's not really looking at data of a particular community. And I'm, Councilmember Bonilla was around when Bay Meadows was going through its iterations, and to your credit, it has been an incredible success and really gave us a lot more housing than many communities up and down the state have done. So I think you really have to take a look at what each community has done. I also think it kind of undermines the methodical and comprehensive nature of the general plan process. If in two years, the state doesn't like what we've done, then it's going to be, again, back to a one-size-fits-all, and that causes me a lot of consternation because I really feel like that process is comprehensive and methodical for a reason. I think we have a lot of physical and local land use constraints, whether they be by water or open space, that makes it tremendously difficult for this city, and we're really doing our part in the general plan process. So I don't want to see that undermined. I also think it doesn't provide, this is one of the things we had in our original letter, and the current iteration still does not provide for any follow-up on whether it is, the bill accomplishes what it sets out to do. It may not increase affordable housing. It may just improve property values for speculators. We just don't know, and I don't see any follow-up in the end run as to where it gets us. And then finally, what I'm most concerned about is that it may impose untenable fiscal impacts on the city itself. And I don't see anything in the bill that says, tell you what, we're going to require more housing from you, but we are also going to give you some funding for the infrastructure needed to support that housing. And I just don't see it. I see it from the state as it being sort of a hammer, if you will, if you don't do the housing, but that's too, we won't give you funding, in other words, for transportation or infrastructure if you don't do the housing, but we're going to need it before the housing goes in, or we need a guarantee that it's coming with us. So if there were changes to the bill, especially fiscally, that would allow the city to tolerate whatever a jobs-rich zone is, and upzoning in a job-rich zone, I'd like to see it with some dollars attached to it. So anyway, for those reasons, I'd like to keep it as an opposition. I recognize that that may be troubling for the rest of the council, but that's kind of where I am. And again, I appreciate that the author has tried to listen to localities and their objections, but I just still don't think it's there, especially with the Marin County exception. That's troubling. So thanks for hearing me out.
I want to follow up on that briefly. I think you make excellent points. I think it's a new year and a new bill, and it is getting better. I would like to see us as a city in, I actually said the opposite last year. I said, let's forget about this, let them do their process in Sacramento, they don't care about us anyway. That is decidedly not true anymore. Our state senator, our assembly member want to engage with us and hear from us, and I want them to hear exactly what you just said, Diane. I think they need to hear from us, and at this point, we are being vilified by Sacramento. We are being made to be the poster child for the anti-housing folks, the NIMBYs. We're the poster child for the NIMBYs statewide, and that is wrong. It distorts our record of building housing, of supporting housing, and I'd like, I think that San Mateo needs to engage. As Rick said, we are a leader in this county, and for that reason, for that reason, that's why I'm going to suggest that we do rescind our formal opposition at this point. I'm not ready because the amendments that I'd like to see have not been made, so I'm not asking us to take any formal position at this point. That's where I stand. Any further comment before we go ahead?
Yeah, so I just have a question. I mean, what is the comparative advantage to being neutral and staying engaged in the conversation and pushing some of the questions that Diane and everyone else raised versus staying opposed? I mean, is there, is there more leverage taking one or the other position?
Who are you posing that question to?
I'd like to use one of my lifelines and defer that question. You know, I'm really not qualified to, you know, sort of answer that question in terms of the impact it would have in Sacramento. My sense is that, you know, our position, the city of San Mateo's position on this, isn't going to change the mind of the author of the bill, or those who really strongly oppose the bill. I think our voice is reflecting our concerns and our interests, and perhaps there's some middle in there that our interests might appeal to and could have some effect. But whether it's going to move the needle, I really don't know.
Okay. So if it is, you know, truly like an optics or a political decision, you know, my intention is that we stay as engaged in this conversation as possible. I don't think that it's strategic for us to optically position ourselves to welcome things like lawsuits from Gavin Newsom, and, which is what has happened recently, and so I don't see any clear disadvantage to withdrawing the opposition, staying engaged, making sure that we are getting answers to these questions. I only see, you know, the downside in being called out and punitively, and through litigation.
Maybe I should ask the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco why they felt compelled to do 10 to 1. I don't know the answer to that, but I appreciate the comments that have been made, so we go from there.
I think we all maybe have slightly different ways of saying the same thing, which is that we have specific comments for Senator Hill about how this should be changed and made better. But I think that most of us here want to engage in that process.
Senator Mayor, if I could add a couple of comments?
Please.
I really don't know exactly. I don't think I read the article about the supervisors in San Francisco. One thing I know just by looking empirically, it's already much denser than San Mateo, and I think they're not relishing the idea that it could become even more dense, although they have, you know, a very active construction program in San Francisco. I want to take a look at some of the facts. I just want to reiterate that what Sean said was that it would require 45-foot heights within certain areas, and up to 50-foot heights with floor area ratios of around 3.0. Those are already our heights, right? Well, I think density could go higher. They're talking about unlimited density in some areas. But I think density is something we've already all looked at and thought about as a way where we could get more housing in San Mateo. It's a very reasonable way, because it's not unheard of to see 100 or even 150 units built on an acre within five or six or seven stories. So we're only at 50 units per acre. I mean, that's kind of small. So I just want to say, I think this thing is not that far away from reality, but the great thing is it gives you two years to figure it out, right? And I'm sure that if you're working seriously on it, right, and like I say, I think it could be amended between now and when it faces an up or down vote, okay? Because if pressure comes, there will be an amendment. I don't think, because this is it. It's already a two-year bill. It ends at the end of this month.
I'm not trying to change anybody's mind tonight, and I recognize that this is not the same bill as last year. It's a different bill, and so people may have changed their minds, or may not have changed their minds, and I think Senator Hill wanted to give us that opportunity.
So I could go along with withdrawing opposition. That would be fine with me.
So just a couple of comments in response to Councilmember Bonilla's comments. I agree with you on the heights, but that's not talking about the parking, getting rid of parking requirements and perhaps upzoning neighborhoods that are now nowhere near Caltrain stations. So that's one component that I think would be, would hurt San Mateo a bit more than the 45-foot restrictions. So, I mean, I think we're, I mean, I kind of agree with Sean that there's really not, you know, it's not going to make a difference one way or another if we're negative or neutral. And it sounds like we have a majority in favor of the neutral position. But I do think, one of the, and I'm not against going to the neutral position, but I do think one of the advantages, to answer your question at least for me, is that it shows that, you know, if you're going to come in here and take away all of our authority, especially a city that likes, I think we're doing a lot for housing, you need to go above and beyond and prove it to us. We're not, and it is taking a couple steps in the right direction, but there are still, as Councilmember Papin pointed out, a lot of negatives to it that need to be addressed. So whether or not that's us neutral and we have to, or we need to be convinced, I don't think it really makes a difference, but that's at least my takeaway. I prefer the opposed as opposed to the neutral position.
I hear a lot of us saying the same things, and so I appreciate you've reiterated some of the things you agree with, and I don't think any of us want to be the poster child that Sacramento was using as NIMBYism, and if there is a political reason for rescinding our formal opposition, it's to say, we're not, we're not going to be your poster child for NIMBYism and anti-housing. So that's what I would propose that we do, that we rescind that formal opposition. We can express all of our views about how the bill should change to Senator Hill, but I don't think we should take any position on it at this point because there will be amendments. Does anyone else agree with me? Do we need to take a formal vote on this? I think we have three.
Motion, second.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we rescind formal opposition but take no position at this time. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
There's three, four, and two against. That passes.
Three in favor. Three, four, and two against. It's like, I can't do that. Three in favor.
I like the way you said that, Joe.
Two opposed.
Three, four, six, nine, two.
I know, I confuse easily. Okay? Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item number 11, new business, private sewer lateral update. Again, Drew Corbett. We have an ordinance introduction. Or do you want to pass this off to someone else, Mr. City Manager?
I'm going to pass this off to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name's Alonso Barona. I'm a management analyst at the Public Works Department, and today, staff was introducing this evening the proposed revisions to the private sewer lateral ordinance.
Welcome.
Suspiciously stepped out of the room. Pete was here.
There's nothing Joan cannot fix.
Thank you, Joan.
What would we do without Joan?
So the city's current private sewer lateral ordinance states that the property owner is responsible to repair, replace, and maintain their sewer lateral. A private sewer lateral is defined as the pipe running from the building to the city sewer main, including the wide connection at the city main. This does include any portion of the pipe that crosses into the public right-of-way and is buried underneath the sidewalk and street. The current ordinance does not have any triggers other than those required concerning health and safety. Why update the sewer ordinance now? A supplemental sewer lateral ordinance will help achieve city goals to prevent sanitary sewer overflows and reduce inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. Supplementing the city's private sewer lateral ordinance to include more in-depth requirements of inspections and subsequent repair or replacement will increase the detection of deficient sewer laterals. As deficient laterals are identified and repaired or replaced, the city's investment in upgrading the sanitary sewer system will be better protected. It also aligns with the city council priority to identify ways to expedite the replacement of deficient sewer laterals. Reducing inflow and infiltration from sewer laterals will have other benefits, such as maintaining the integrity of public roadways and not undermining construction and paving efforts of the city's pavement management program. Staff has conducted various community meetings since late 2020. Staff has conducted various community meetings since late 2018 regarding the revisions to the private sewer lateral ordinance, including three Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission meetings, two city council meetings, including tonight, and two community meetings. The community engagement conducted provided insight that guided the revision of the sewer lateral ordinance. Public Works met with various departments and divisions to develop the revision to the sewer lateral ordinance. Staff reviewed different logistical components on how the ordinance can impact property owners and city staff. These logistic including refining of sewer lateral inspection triggers, calculating the inspection triggers, researching software implementation for tracking. Staff is currently developing the administrative regulations on how to implement the revised sewer lateral ordinance language. City Council recommended to staff to develop a revision to the private sewer lateral ordinance to include a title transfer and mandatory sewer lateral inspection component. Based on the direction of city council and input from the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, staff developed the following revisions for the full language. Please see Attachment 1 in the council's agenda packet. Title Transfer: Only when there is a sale of real property. Before the issuance of a building permit for an addition or alteration remodel project with evaluation exceeding $90,000, an amount prescribed by the city council. Recommendation for this trigger will simplify the requirements for property owners and implementation by city staff. The city council can review the project valuation every fiscal year to observe if adjustments need to occur and implement an updated project valuation per resolution if needed. Sewer lateral backup or blockage resulting in a sewer lateral overflow. Environmental compliance already enforces sewer lateral backups and overflows, but under the proposed revision, it would require a sewer lateral inspection to determine the actual cause of the backup and whether the lateral needs to be repaired or replaced. Change in the sewer customer classification. An example is when a building was once an office and is considered a Class B standard strength use of water and now is a grocery store, which changes that classification to C, moderate strength. In this instance, the sewer class changes and a sewer lateral inspection would be needed. The revision to the private sewer lateral ordinance could potentially contribute to 426 sewer lateral inspections per fiscal year. For marked collaborative process, two other additions to the ordinance language were included that detail the frequency of sewer lateral inspections. If a property owner completes a sewer lateral inspection and only minor repairs were conducted, they are not subject to another sewer lateral inspection until after five years. If a property owner replaces their full sewer lateral, they are not subject to another sewer lateral inspection until after 25 years, which aligns with the research conducted from several other agencies. Staff received one letter regarding the revisions of the sewer lateral ordinance. In response to that letter, staff would like to make the following clarification. Sale of Real Property. Staff is interpreting the sale of a real property as a transfer of real property in exchange for money. Non-sale transfers of real property, such as an inheritance, donation, et cetera, would not be subject to the sewer lateral inspection requirement. Condominiums. The proposed ordinance would apply to the sale of real property, including the sale of condominiums and townhomes. However, staff is recommending that the application of the ordinance to condominiums be delayed as staff works through the logistics of implementation. Administrative regulations are common within the municipal code. The regulations help staff and residents understand the operational details of an ordinance, such as with the sewer service charge. Staff is anticipating the regulations will include criteria for passing or failing of a sewer lateral inspection, the sewer lateral inspection form, criteria for who can conduct an inspection, and other aspects of implementing the ordinance. Staff anticipates the ordinance to increase staff time needed to maintain the current level of service. The costs associated with additional staff have not been budgeted. Staff will be requesting additional staff during the 2022 budget process. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for questions. Here is the summary of the ordinance for your reference during the discussion.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions before we go to public comment?
Got a question, maybe a couple. So, thank you. I missed your name.
Alonso.
Alonso.
Welcome.
Thank you. I see that if you go back one slide, at the bottom of the slide, it looks like there, like the actual turnout of when inspected sewer laterals is about half of them are bad and need work?
That's just an estimate that staff has determined. If 50%, if we have a 50% sewer lateral deficiency rate, we would probably see around 426 sewer lateral inspections.
Yeah, and that's a lot of inspections. Let me ask you this. I seem to recall at some point, maybe Brad knows this, for some permit we needed to do to go forth with our project, the Clean Water Program, wasn't it a requirement that we actually look at instituting a point-of-sale policy?
That was actually the cease and desist order we received back in, I believe, 2010. That's what caused us to negotiate with the Water Board to allow us to, rather than pay the fine, to invest in our own system, and that's why we have the sewer lateral cost-sharing program.
Okay, good. So the cost-sharing program...
They did at that time want us to have an ordinance as well, and I don't believe the one was passed, and so that's why we're back to you now. We have had, I think, Bill Johnson come to the last council meeting supporting us. He's with the Water Board, supporting us moving forward on this.
Okay, thanks. So additionally, the, lost my train of thought there for a second.
Do you want to hear public comment first?
Yeah. No, I have another question. So let's say a condominium or a townhouse, which is included, I think, in the program, has a failure, but their failure is maybe between their place and the actual lateral that goes to the street, because they don't all have their own lateral that connects to the main, right? So my question is, regarding the cost-sharing program, how is that going to be affected by this?
Well, yeah, we see the cost-sharing program used really well. I anticipate we may run out of money, so we may want to come back to council and ask for more money if that's the case.
So, but my thing is, if we have point-of-sale inspection, right, and there's a transaction happening, are the folks doing the deal eligible to apply for the cost-sharing?
Yes, most definitely. Yes.
Yes, okay. Good. That's still a good incentive.
We don't have any restrictions.
Still a good incentive to get it done.
Good question.
We don't have any restrictions on who can apply for that cost-sharing.
Okay, good. Okay, I think that's my questions for now.
Do we have any speakers, looks?
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker.
Mr. Brook. We knew who it was going to be.
I read it, John.
So did I.
I'll try not to repeat too much. I'd like to comment on the proposed sewer lateral inspection ordinance as it relates to residential housing. The ordinance reads, "An inspection is required upon sale of real property serviced by a private sewer lateral." My concern that a sale is a transfer of real property and other transfers, such as transfer through inheritance or a court order transfer, would also be caught up in that. The staff report has said that those will be exceptions. My objection to the ordinance specifically is that it's too general, that it shouldn't specify where the, an inspection is required and where one isn't. Right now, you cannot tell that one way or the other. The city of San Mateo has a problem with sewer lateral leakage. As fewer than 2% of the properties transfer each year, a point-of-sale inspection requirement will not identify all leaking laterals over any reasonable time period. There's also the political consideration of a buyer purchasing a property only to discover after the purchase that the sewer lateral needs replacement at great cost. The home buyer is going to blame the city for not doing more to protect them. There's a solution to these issues. Keep the city out of the sewer lateral inspection business. How? Require the seller to provide a disclosure, a mandatory disclosure form to the buyer with facts about leaking sewer laterals and the cost to repair. The disclosure recommends that the buyer not purchase the property until the buyer has received an inspection certificate or obtained an inspection. If the inspection reveals a leakage, to delay completing the sale until the problem is remedied. This disclosure approach has worked successfully in Belmont, which uses pretty much what I just outlined. The benefits to the city of San Mateo include, the city is not involved in a private property transaction, record-keeping and staff involvement are greatly minimized, which reduces costs to the city. Neither a mandatory nor voluntary inspection approach will solve the problem of leaky sewer laterals. Only a neighborhood-by-neighborhood inspection of each lateral will achieve that objective. I recommend that the city, city council ask staff for a more detailed investigation of the voluntary approach to sewer lateral inspection.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brook. With that, there's no further speakers. I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. I have a question. Brad, do you know how many jurisdictions locally have not only the mandatory point-of-sale inspection, but a mandatory point-of-sale replacement if it's required?
I believe Alonso probably has that in front of him.
I'm sorry. Let me ask Alonso. Alonso, welcome. Alonso, how many council presentations have you given?
This would be my second one.
Excellent. I remember you from the prior one, and I...
That's 100% more than before.
Yes. Tell me about, Mayor Pappen, there's no question, but that, tell us about jurisdictions that have either a mandatory inspection or mandatory point-of-sale.
10 cities.
When I say, sorry, mandatory inspection or mandatory replacement, 10 cities? That includes Hillsborough, I believe?
Well, if it's a point-of-sale and the mandatory inspection, well, there's different versions of it. So there's a point-of-sale of inspection, which is four. Cities have that, Hillsborough, Millbrae, San Bruno, East Bay Mudd. There's a sewer lateral certificate, which is also a title transfer, and that's Belmont, Brisbane, Burlingame, Pacifica, South San Francisco. And the mandatory inspection policy is San Carlos. Now, cities that don't have it, it's just on a responsibility like our own, is Foster City, Hafoum Bay, and Redmond City.
And do you happen to know any of those jurisdictions that do a cost-sharing, like San Mateo's program?
No, it's very rare in the Bay Area. I think we're maybe one or, including ourselves, maybe like one or two other cities that do that cost-sharing program.
We're used to that. We're special.
The people of San Mateo are special.
Oh, I'm alive. What's the difference between the Millbrae, Hillsborough, and how we do it? Because this is unclear to me as to when is the owner required to do it? Like, prior to the sale? And it's a part of the transaction?
So the buyer and seller will negotiate the, well, the inspection will happen during the transfer.
You mean as part of escrow?
During negotiations.
During negotiations, correctly. So it'll be during the negotiation, buyer and seller will determine whether or not they would repair or replace their sewer lateral based on the sewer lateral inspection that has to occur.
So the testing has to occur during the escrow period? Right? Wrong?
Correct.
Okay. Or maybe before, if the owner just gets it done voluntarily and then they present it to a potential buyer and say, yeah. And what, how do the other cities do it?
Well, other cities, they do it as a seller must have lateral inspected before the transfer title, unless they have a sewer lateral certificate on file. And then the seller is responsible for repair replacement. There's also other ways where the cost of inspection and required repair replacement may be negotiable between the seller and buyer. And there's...
So we're just requiring, then, if you want to sell your property, you're going to have to have this piece of paper that says you inspected it and here are the results. And then the buyer and the seller will subsequently negotiate who's going to pick up the tab on that?
Correct.
So just like an old roof or old windows?
But to get the city money.
The city's going to provide half of it, either way.
But to get the city money, you, let's say it's mid-transaction, right? And the owner says to the buyer, or the, yeah, the seller says to the buyer, well, I've applied for this thing, and you don't know whether you get the city money while your escrow is pending. Do I, can that happen? Probably could, given the timing of things, right?
Yeah.
How long does it take you to get back to somebody when they apply for the lateral money?
Within a day or two.
A day or so?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's pretty rapid then. That's doable.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know the logistic, thank you for letting me, because I couldn't figure the logistics. Sorry.
Eric? My question was, yeah, so that, so you can let them know in a day, but if the funds run out, which they have in the past, then, you know, the average person really doesn't know whether or not there's funds are available. I mean, I guess they would find out in a day, but they might not get them. It's not, it's not guaranteed.
Well, if they apply for the program and the program is still accepting applications and they would be, it's pretty much you're putting a hold on that fund for them to go through the process and then get that reimbursement in the end.
Did you evaluate how Belmont did it? And can you talk about the pros and cons of how they do it versus how you're proposing we do it?
Yes. So the difference between Belmont is that they require a certificate, a sewer lateral inspection certificate. The city is not requiring that sort of certificate. The city will instead have that on file through our intergovernmental system. So if, we would receive the inspection notice saying that if it passed or failed, and we would put that note into our system for that property. So that's a slight difference from the certificate than from Belmont. The other thing is that Belmont requires for remodel $200,000 or more when it comes to disclosure of a sewer lateral inspection. Here, we're just having it just be part of the negotiation process between the buyer and seller.
The speaker who spoke was talking about how if we did it Belmont's way, San Mateo could, I forget the exact words, but stay out of their real estate transaction business or stays, it would require less work. And I didn't quite understand why it requires less work for Belmont as it would under what you're proposing, if I understood his comments correctly.
Yeah, I'm not sure, because this would be less intrusive than Belmont's ordinance, and it'd actually be less work for us than it would be for Belmont.
Through the mayor?
Oh, I have another question. And I'm wondering if we could ask maybe Mr. Brook to answer this, because it's a Realtor, real estate question. Mr. Brook, could you please approach? Mr. Brook, I know there's a form, a list, where things get checked off during an inspection, and those are the things that seller and buyer look at and talk about, and maybe some things they negotiate, who's going to pay a share or all of whatever, right? Is a sewer lateral inspection not included on that list?
You're talking about the real estate broker managing the transaction?
Yes. And so there's an inspection. Is the sewer lateral not listed on the things that should be inspected?
It is not. At Belmont, for example, there's a form, which you can download from the Belmont City website, and which the seller is required to hand to the buyer. And this form talks about... And this form talks about sewer laterals, what can go wrong, and the cost to repair. But whether the buyer and seller choose to do anything about it is up to them. Now, if the buyer has handed a document that says, "We suggest that you get an inspection," and they don't, and the property later turns out to have, need an inspection, well, that pulls the burden off of, you know, the city council to provide, you know, that sort of information. If the buyer gets an inspection and sees that it needs to be remedied, the buyer is probably going to remedy it because the bank won't lend if they see that there's a problem with the property.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brook.
I have just one other thing. Is there some reason why that question is not listed on, you know, they inspect the electrical, they inspect the plumbing, they inspect the roof? And when you have a bad lateral, first thing that happens is you see things coming up out of your shower or your tub, and that's the beginning of other bad things that can go really bad. Why is it not listed? Do you know why?
I think you're thinking of the transfer disclosure statement where the seller has to disclose all problems with the property that they are aware of. So that, for example, if there's a bad roof, the seller would be required to list on the transfer disclosure statement that the roof is bad, or that there's a plumbing issue-
But isn't it typically an inspection of the systems?
There's no requirement for, you know, a housing inspection.
Okay, good. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Brook.
One more question. If you are going to sell your house, and then the sale falls through, but you have that certificate, and then you decide eight months later you want to sell, how long is that pass, as it were, on your sewer lateral? How long is that good for?
I believe it's good for five years.
Five years?
Zero motion.
Well, it can happen in five years. Okay, so I take my house off the market, I still have that certificate, and that could hang out for a few more years. Okay. All right. What do you need?
I like the way we've got our proposal laid out here. I would make a motion approve.
Well, I think, is this a first reading, or what are we doing?
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. We'll see it again next month. Next item is the fiscal year 2019-2020 mid-year financial summary update from Rich Lee and Grace. This is item number 12.
I'm Grace Castaneda, budget manager. With me tonight is Rich Lee, our finance director, and the item before you is the 2019 to 2020 mid-year financial update. I'll go over the status of our current year operations before passing it to Rich, who'll give us the pension update. So first, on to our general fund update for the current year. Here's where our general fund revenues stand, with original estimate at $134 million and revised estimate almost flat at $134.2 million. And as you can see on the slide, our major revenue sources are listed out, which include property tax, sales tax, property transfer tax, and transient occupancy tax. I'll go through each of our major revenue sources in the upcoming slides. It's also important to note that the original estimate here does not yet show the use of unassigned fund balance, which was originally estimated at $3.6 million. So I'll go over that in the upcoming slides as well. So property tax, that's the general fund's largest revenue source, makes up about 45% of our total general fund revenues. And through mid-year, it's looking to be down $1.6 million over original forecast. And that's mainly due to a $2.4 million shortfall in property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, or what I'll call VLF. That's offset by a higher excess ERAF based on the latest figures from the county. A little bit about VLF and why we're facing with shortfall. It's funded from ERAF, countywide, that's $42.4 million, and for the cities portion, that's $2.4 million shortfall. VLF is funded from ERAF, the Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, and calculated as the amount that non-basic age school districts require to meet the state-determined level of funding. And if such ERAF funds are called VLF, then the VLF funding comes from the property tax revenues of the non-basic age school districts. A little bit about VLF and why we're facing with shortfall. So effectively, for VLF purpose, the calculation is based on non-basic age school districts. That the less non-basic age school districts, there are, the less funding there is available to meet the VLF calculation. VLF is funded from ERAF. For us in San Mateo County, we have 23 school districts, and out of those 23, we had eight non-basic age school districts last year. This year, we have six. And that turn of the two school districts have caused our VLF shortfall. And the county estimates that that six, non-basic age school districts will be reduced to zero, so the calculation is based on, this would be an ongoing issue for us. When you respond, the county and the lobbyist are in contact with the Department of Finance. The county will be filing a reimbursement- For us in San Mateo County, we have 23 school districts, and out of those 23, we had eight non-basic age school districts last year. Tonight, you have approved letters to Assemblymember Mullen and sent us a bill for the same special appropriation request. Because VLF shortfall is not a statutory funding requirement, absent any legislation that's going back to the, being ongoing, special appropriation seems to be the ongoing run. This is something that we'll be monitoring and incorporating. Sales tax, that's general fund's second-largest funding source, makes up about 20% of total for mid-year, which is looking to be up $1.1 million over the original forecast. Because VLF shortfall is not- We've got revised estimates for our sales statutory spending that's reflecting higher increases in absent any legislation. The retail sector is still not turning around while the food service sector continues to climb. Also, the estimates you see here do include impact from the way here in separating, which cities are getting sales tax for online transactions, and that went into effect April of 2019. So this fiscal year will be our first full year of receiving those sales tax. And being that this is the first year of us receiving those sales tax, and we don't have enough data to rely on and be confident- Sales tax only including half of the estimated impact this year, which is about $200,000. The retail sector is still not turning around while the food service sector continues- We ended sales tax last year with $26 million. So this year's revised estimate at $26.3 million is really remaining fairly flat to what we received last year. Property transfer tax, that's 7% of the total general fund revenues, and it's the general fund's most volatile revenue source. And to try and illustrate that fact, the different colors you see, each color is a month, and each bar is a fiscal year. So you take a look at the yellow section of the current 2019 to 2020 bar, that represents what we received in August of this current fiscal year. Now, you go back to the prior fiscal year, to 2018 to 19, that red section represents the same August, same month, and we received less. If you go back even one year further back, to 2017 to 18, August of that year, we received a lot more. So it just goes to show the volatility of this revenue source and really the lack of trend, and so the difficulty in projecting for property transfer tax. Another cut of this, this shows property transfer tax through the years, from 2004 to 2005. You see that we got a dip through the great recession years, and last year, 2018 to 19, was a record-high year at almost $14 million. So through the first six months of this current year, we received $6 million, and so for the remaining six months, currently, we are estimating that we'll receive another four to make it $10 million total for the year. Transient occupancy tax, that's 5% of the total general fund revenues, and through mid-year, it's down $800,000 from the original estimate. Primary reason for this is that we have two hotels that are under construction. Marriott was in construction, where they renovated segments of their rooms at a time. They just completed all of their renovations in November, so we should be seeing more TOT from them through the end of the fiscal year. Los Prados closed in September for a new Hampton Inn, and with more rooms, but for now, that's taking 116 rooms out of our room stock and the TOT that comes along with it. Then, in addition to these two hotels, we're just seeing an overall downward trend in TOT from the rest of our hotels this year over last year. So overall, we're projecting an $800,000 decrease in transient occupancy tax. Moving on to general fund expenditures, we adopted the budget at $137.6 million, and that includes what we consider to be discretionary expenditures. For this year, that's $2.4 million in additional payments towards our pension unfunded liability, $2 million towards capital projects, and $1 million to our housing reserve. Our mid-year adjusted budget is at $140.3 million, and that's $2.7 million over adopted budget. Those adjustments include .7 million of encumbrance carryover, $1.3 million towards Fire Station 25, and .7 million to our police substation and sleeping quarters. An additional adjustment that we'll be recommending to council is for our workers' compensation So this is a look at our workers' compensation liability reserves that we are required to set aside to meet the marginally acceptable confidence level as defined by our actuaries. And the increase that you see here in the required set aside is as a result of the increase in claims that we have incurred and the rise in healthcare costs through the years. Claims expenses have been well above historical averages in the past few years, with last fiscal year at a record high, and again, is tracking high this year. And while we have been making a lot of headway in settling outstanding claims, an actuarial study that was conducted earlier in the year shows that an additional $2.2 million is needed beyond what we had budgeted to set aside for our liability reserves. So together with the highest claims expenses, the total recommended adjustment is estimated to be between $2.2 to $3.2 million. And we'll come back to council for the supplemental appropriation later in the fiscal year as we refine that number. We take the higher estimate that will make our adjusted budget from $140.3 million to $143.5 million. And when we're looking at the adjustments for the general fund, we're also considering where the fund balance of the general fund is at. Last year, general fund experienced a $10 million operating surplus, and that's primarily due to our property transfer tax, in which we had several large commercial transactions occurring at the end of the year. That brought us to a record-high year of almost $14 million, as I had mentioned earlier. And so when we put this result together with the outlook for the current year, this table shows the activities of the general fund between the original budget and the adjusted budget. The beginning fund balance in the original budget had not considered the operating surplus that the general fund had last year. But because of the surplus, we started the year with an $88 million fund balance, as you can see under the adjusted budget column. And under that same column, you can see the revised revenue estimates at $134.2 million. You can also see that all the discretionary expenditures are included, just as the original budget did. Then with the $2.7 million additional appropriations that's been approved so far, that brings us to an increased use of us unassigned fund balance by a difference of $2.5 million. Then adding the recommended workers' compensation support, the fund balance for the current year is now estimated to end at $78.9 million, which is 4.9 million higher than our original estimate. So even with including all the discretionary expenditures, the supplemental appropriations, and the workers' compensation support, from a financial perspective, we're still going to be better off than we had anticipated. So our recommendation is that we move forward with the discretionary expenditures for this year, and we'll ask council for that direction at the end of this presentation. And briefly on to the other funds. In the sewer fund, sewer rates have been set last year for a five-year period from 2018-19 to 2022 to 23, and revenues are coming in as expected. Expenses are also tracking to budgeted amounts, and we're seeing an increase in capital expenditures this year over last year, and that's as expected as the clean water program is underway. Construction services fund expenditures are also tracking to budget. In the mid-year, revenues are up this year over last year. We've received large fees from the Bay Meadows Phase II project, and overall, the revenues in the fund are on track to exceed expectations for the year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rich for our pension update.
Good evening, Mayor Gothos and members of the council. Rich Lee, finance director. I want to thank Grace for her portion of the presentation and excellent preparation. So on to the pension update. The chart before you shows the history of the city's unfunded pension liability over the past five years. From the left, the actuarial valuation from the valuation date of June 30th of 2014. Onward to the right, with the latest actuarial data from June 30th of 2018. The percentage right below the date reflects the return on investment for Calpers investment portfolio. As you can see, in 2014, the unfunded pension liability was just north of $150 million. With the latest actuarial that we have from Calpers, it's in excess of $240 million now. The lines going across from left to right correspond to the axis, the far-right axis, which is showing the city's funded ratio for the safety and miscellaneous plans. In other words, it's the ratio of the planned assets relative to the total liability for each of the plans. And so just wanted to provide this historical context for the council. Relative, looking at the unfunded pension liability in a different way, with a particular focus on the city's safety plan, the value of assets for the safety plan are, it's just north of $252 million. However, relative to the total liability for just the retired members alone, so these are members that are no longer working for the city, the liability just for retired members is well in excess of the assets that are in the total plan for the safety plan. So that just provides some context to these significant liabilities that the city has. The amortization or the payment on the unfunded liability over the next 10 years is expected to increase from $16 million to $27 million. Using simple math, that's effectively $1 million per year over the next 10 years that the city has to absorb as a part of its operating cost. So quite a significant ask to absorb to make it sustainable for our residents and our community. Calpers, in late November, released its pension outlook tool. It's a very nice tool for administrators throughout its members to do what-if scenarios, providing inputs on a number of actuarial assumptions. For example, the discount rate. So the discount rate is their long-term assumption for what they can expect to receive in interest returns over a long period of time, in this case, 30 years. And in our scenario for staff, we put in a scenario of a 7% return on investment for next fiscal year, and then a 6.5 ROI for the remainder of the 10-year forecast. In addition, assuming that the council would be supportive of future additional discretionary payments, $2 million per year as contemplated in the current 10-year long-term general fund plan. And with that, with all of these assumptions plugged in, what that effectively happens is what's shown on this graph before you. The graph, the line, the dark blue line, indicates the contributions from the city over the next 30 years without additional discretionary payments to Calpers. The gray line, it shows the contributions, $2 million for every year for the next 10 years, over the, so it shows the contributions for 30 years. So as expected, you see the gray line is above the blue line for the 10-year period, and then for the 20 years thereafter- and then for the 20 years thereafter, it goes below the blue line. When you calculate the difference between the two, this is the difference. So even with the $20 million investment in the additional pension contributions, that effectively results in a $20 million savings over a 30-year period. So that's something for the council to take into consideration for the current fiscal year, for the discretionary expenditure, as well as for the 10-years period. ADP or Additional Pension Contributions is one of the strategies that the council has already set forth. Another is to employ cost-sharing agreements through labor negotiations. So the cost-sharing in terms of employees are paying at least half of the normal cost. So the normal cost is the cost of one year of service to the city. We've also negotiated COLAs that are at or below the actuarial assumption, so that helps to control the perceval or the compensation that's subject to pensions. Oops, sorry. And then finally, reductions in expenditures. So as a part of the two-year cycle, we are, the focus on year one, which is coming up, is on the operating budget. So what are ways that we can operate more efficiently as a city, but also taking a look at what is the cost to the city to maintain the current service levels? So something that the city has also been looking at since October 2018 are revenue enhancement and then strategic use of our reserves. So looking back, this is an excerpt from the 10-year forecast of the next two fiscal years. We're currently working on updating this and we'll bring this back to the council as a part of the budget study session in April. So there's two things I want to draw to your attention. First are the net reductions. So net reductions are a combination of either additional revenues that are above and beyond what was assumed in the budget or budgetary savings through staff vacancies or other operating savings. The second is the deficit. So even with those net reductions, we still are faced with a deficit in a sense of $2 million per year. Because of that, and this is not a surprise and it's been consistent with what's been presented to council already, council has asked staff to come back with revenue enhancement qualitative and quantitative perspective. So the current target right now is to come back to the council and a special study session, the second meeting in February, before we move forward with polling to make sure that the council is ready to get final council direction on the polling that we anticipate with council support to move forward in mid-March. And we'll present those results from the polling at the study session for the budget in April. So to recap, the recommendation this evening is for the council to move forward with the discretionary expenditures, in particular, the 2.4 million and the additional pension contribution, $2 million from the general fund to support the city's CIP program, and then $1 million for the housing set aside. And with that, we welcome any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment? No public comment. I'll bring it back to the council. Any?
Just one question.
Yes, please.
About the 6.5 ROI estimate for the next 10 years. What was that based on?
The city engaged with a local professional actuary. He was actually one of the most regarded actuaries in the entire United States who actually does business right here in San Mateo. Their assumption as a part of the most recent actuarial that they performed for us was a 6.5% return on investment. So that's based on their experience and what they've seen with the Calpers Retirement Trust at large.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. Yes? I'd make a motion that we accept the fiscal year 2019-20 mid-year financial summary and authorize staff to move forward with the 2019-20 general fund discretionary expenditures. I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Would you like to give any other presentations?
As a matter of fact, I would.
Okay.
Mayor Gothols, if I may through the mayor.
Yes, we have to announce that we are now meeting as the special street and flood contr-- excuse me. No, yes. You wanted to interrupt about something else first.
Well, we want to switch the order. We're going to request that we take item 14 before item 13. They had action actually asked to occur first, so we would ask for you to conduct the public hearing.
Got it.
That for the record is a city council public hearing as well as a San Mateo Joint Powers Financing Authority. So for the record, we are conducting that as city council also. And we did agendize this agenda as concurrent for both entities. So we ask you to take item 14 first and then we'll follow up with item 13.
That is how we shall do it. Excellent. Our next presentation. Thank you.
Good evening again. The item before you this evening is a resolution authorizing execution of an escrow deposit and trust agreement related to the refunding of outstanding bonds. Just by way of background, the San Mateo Joint Public Financing Authority, or the JPFA, was established in 1993 pursuant to a joint exercise of powers agreement between the city and the RDA. In 2011, the JPFA issued $5.7 million in revenue bonds to finance the cost of levy improvements benefiting the South Bayfront neighborhood. Upon the dissolution of all redevelopment agencies in the state of California in February 2012, the successor agency replaced the RDA and the JPFA. The JPFA, as noted in the AR, cannot be used to issue the 20-- excuse me, the 2020 bonds because the longest maturity of existing debt goes out to 2032 and the proposed amortization schedule for the 2020 bonds goes beyond that. As such, we are going to be issuing the 2020 bonds through the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority, or the PFA, to refund the 2011A bonds. So the item before you recommends to adopt a resolution to authorize execution of an escrow deposit and trust agreement in connection with the refunding of outstanding bonds and approving related documents and official actions. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I have no speaker slips.
Then we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize execution of an escrow deposit and trust agreement in connection with the refunding of our outstanding bonds and approving related documents and official actions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Finance Director Lee, do you have any other presentations you'd like to give us?
I do, as a matter of fact. Good evening again. The item before you this evening is a resolution to approve the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority's sale of revenue bonds. By way of background, in 2013, the city identified 22 miles of failed streets. So failed streets are streets that are below a certain PCI score, so pavement condition index. To date, the city has repaired 11 of those 22 miles. In 2015, FEMA decertified the Cuyahoga Point Levy and that area serves about 2,800 structures that were, and because of that, it was designated as high risk and they called it a special flood hazard area. Because of that, flood insurance is required for structures from mortgages, with mortgages from federally regulated or insured lenders. Structures without flood insurance and those areas are ineligible for federal assistance in the event of flooding. And flood insurance premiums and those areas are significantly more expensive. So $2 million of the $25 million is to fix that levy. The significant portion of the flood control is actually for construction of two new pump stations. That's $23 million. In November of 2015, the San Mateo voters extended the quarter cent transactions and use tax through Measure S to the year 2048. Based on resident input, street rehabilitation and flood control were identified as priorities and the use of these tax revenues. So the item again before you this evening asks for the city council to adopt a resolution to consent to the San Mateo Foster City Public Financing Authority's sale of revenue bonds to finance the cost of these public infrastructure improvements and to refinance the 2011 bonds, given the advantageous state of the market in comparison to 2011. So there are a number of documents that are associated with the bond sale, first of which is the indenture of trusts. And I'm just going to provide a brief description of these documents that are on record with the city clerk. The indenture of trusts is a contract with the bondholders. It pledges revenues received by the financing authority to pay interest and principal. There's the assignment agreement that assigns the financing authority's rights to receive lease payments to the trustee, in this case, it's Bank of New York, for the benefit of the bond owners. There's the site lease, so the leased asset for this financing is the main library. So the city is leasing the library to the financing authority and the financing authority provides a lump sum, which is equivalent to the principal amount of the 2020 bonds. There's the facility lease, so that the financing authority leases the main library back to the city for an annual lease payments equivalent to the 2020 bonds debt service. Probably one of the more lengthy documents is the preliminary official statement. So this is information provided to investors and potential investors about the city, the financing authority, the purpose for issuing the bonds, the leased property, in this case, the library, security for the payments of interest and principal, and the terms of the bonds. So there are two installment payment contracts. The first is related to the refinancing of the 2011 bonds and the South Bayfront Assessment District. The city pledges these revenues to a special fund to repay the 2011 bonds. Oops, sorry. And the second is related to the North Bay Shore Assessment District. Then there's also the bond purchase agreement. This is between the city, the financing authority, and the underwriter. It includes such terms as the interest rates and the price the underwriter will pay to the financing authority for purchase of these bonds. And finally, as you just approved in the previous agenda item, the escrow deposit and trust agreement, and this is required for the JPFA to effectuate refinancing of their 2011 bonds. So the recommendation this evening is for the council to adopt a resolution to consent to the authority's sale of revenue bonds not to exceed 54 million to finance public improvements and to refinance outstanding bonds, to declare the intent to reimburse expenditures from bond proceeds, and finally, to direct certain actions in connection with the sale of the bonds. And with that, I welcome any questions from the council.
Did I hear you correctly that tonight, we are approving the funding mechanism that will allow us to eliminate all failed streets and to make the flood control improvements to North Shoreview and North Central, which will save those residents millions of dollars in flood insurance every single year?
As a matter of fact, you did. Yes.
Okay. That's pretty cool. That's awesome. Is there any public comment on this item?
I have no speaker slips.
Then I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for a motion. I want to move that we approve this. This is what I've been waiting for. Eliminate all the failed streets and build these flood control improvements so that we get them out of the flood zone. Done. That's my mo-- well, we're doing what you said, which is all that financial stuff.
If you could read out the recommended language there, that would make my--
It was taken away from me. Adopt a resolution to consent to the authority's sale of revenue bonds not to exceed 54 million to finance public improvements and refinance outstanding bonds, declare intent to reimburse expenditures from bond proceeds, and directing certain actions in connection with sale of the bonds. That is my motion.
I second.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Do you have any further? No, I'm just kidding. That's good enough. Now, next item is item fifth. No, reports and announcements. Do we have any reports and announcements?
It rained all week in Hawaii.
None of us, none of us feel bad for you.
I'd like to report--
Yes, please.
--that myself and Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Rodriguez put our painting skills to work yesterday at the homeless shelter in our city for families and a good time was had by all and nothing got particularly screwed up, so it was good.
It looked like a good time. It looked like you made some really--
And it was quite an honor to do it.
Good improvement.
So we missed you guys in your painting acumen, but we'll get you the next time.
Fair enough.
And I would have been there if I didn't have a bone to pick with Kaiser. So, thank you.
I have a quick announcement, just that the Centennial Suffrage Celebration is underway next month and we will be celebrating the League of Women Voters and their 100th birthday. And I'm hoping that we can bring a proclamation to the council to honor their work and 100th birthday.
That shall happen and I would love to invite them to bring in the flag for ceremonial item at our next meeting. Any other reports and announcements? No, we're good. Okay, so now, we are not adjourning. City Attorney, I'm looking at you because--
Give you a couple of options.
Right. I feel like we should take up the recommendation to Caltrain before we go to closed session. Is that one of the options?
Yeah, so the council meeting, regular council meeting, you would adjourn that until after you're done with the special meeting. You would open the special meeting up again, make your decision, and then go back to the closed sessions. So you're adjourning the regular council meeting till the conclusion of the special meeting. That's one option. The other option is go into closed session and then take up the--
Okay, so I want to do the first one, which has us take up the Caltrain thing now?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any disagreement with that?
Maybe a two-minute break while we invite the members who are sitting in conference room C back.
That's a great idea. We'll take a brief two-minute break and then we'll come right back to-- Is this on now? There we go. Okay, I'll start over at the beginning. Welcome-- No. So when we finished just after 7 o'clock, we had not given direction to Caltrain. I don't think that we were in a position to give direction to Caltrain, given the differences of opinion. I've had a brief conversation with the staff from Caltrain during the break. I'm uncomfortable giving you direction at this point. I really would like you to dig in deeper and give me a feasibility study for the other options that are on the table. Those include the one south of 92 and the one in the middle of downtown between Fifth and Ninth. Those two, I think we need feasibility studies on. I believe I'm correct that there is a belief that the option just south of the current proposal, between 10th and 14th, is technically feasible but would absolutely mean the elimination of the daycare center. And so that is not a feasibility study for Caltrain, but a political question for the council. So I believe I'm only asking for feasibility studies on Fifth through Ninth and south of 92. There has been some back and forth with the community. I think that they have made suggestions, proposals, reasons why they think it would be feasible, and to the extent that there was responses to that, I'm just not comfortable and not satisfied with the extent to which we've received your comments, mostly Rafael, about whether it's actually feasible or not. And I'm not, if it's feasible but it would cost a lot of money, I'd like to hear that, but if it's infeasible, that's a different thing. So my proposal to the council would be that we bring this back at a future agenda in March if possible, because time is of the essence. I know that Caltrain wants to move forward, but I need further study on the infeasibility. I need to better understand the technical aspects of why south of 92 is infeasible and why Fifth through Ninth is, at the very least, highly complicated and not safe and likely would not be approved by the PUC. And-- likely would not be approved by the PUC and any other infeasibility that there is. So I'd like to read that. I'd like that report to be shared with the neighborhood so that they understand and can respond to it if they need to. Any disagreement, any other comment on that?
Did you say March?
I'm sorry, February. What month are we in?
Well, I'm just concerned about that letter from Caltrain that says Feb. 28. That's all.
Yes, I'm proposing February. If I said March, I misspelled.
And feasibility study, meaning, you want to see whether the other two that are being proposed by the residents are actually feasible for Caltrain at any price or physically feasible?
There were aspects to them that Rafael talked about tonight that I think made it so that I believe that they are not feasible, and I want to understand that better, because I think he was trying to, in a very short time, respond to not only comments from the neighborhood, but also other things that were being mentioned even tonight. I didn't understand it, and I need a better understanding of what makes it infeasible, the different angles the tracks can or cannot be set at. I think I did understand some of the reasons why downtown does not make sense and the safety aspects of that, but if you can put together a report that lets us all understand better than just you getting up in front of the microphone tonight, I think it would help all of us. And I understand that time is of the essence, so I'm going to try to get you on an agenda. I think that's not a problem to get them back on the agenda in February. No, we can do that. Do we have to pick which February meeting it's going to be tonight?
It'd probably be best if it were the second meeting in February, not February 2nd.
That's probably a good idea for everyone involved.
The first meeting in February?
The second meeting in February.
So that's--
Okay.
The 17th, I believe.
The 17th acceptable to Caltrain.
We can work on it. I would just like to clarify one thing to make sure that we are providing additional written technical information, which is what I hear you're saying, and it's for the, on the two proposals that the community has most recently submitted, on what we have seen from the community, the technical rationale behind those.
It's very hard to interpret what they, what you did on that very, when Rafael got up here on that very small segment, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and what the community had presented, which was slightly larger, certainly, but then--
Yep.
So I myself feel the same way. I'm not particularly clear in my own mind, so I concur with wanting to do it.
Yeah, if it's helpful, I think we can certainly put in writing some of the technical reasons and issues with those two proposals.
The sooner we receive it, the better. If I have any questions, I'll reach out to you. If we could publish that as soon as possible so that the community will also receive that, and they will be able to ask questions or make comments, that would be extremely helpful. I started out tonight looking at the area. Sir, I see your question, and we're not going to address it during this. Public comment's over, but I will talk to you afterwards, or you can ask staff afterwards, Caltrain or San Mateo staff. So that would be my request. I came into this with a certain feeling of wanting to go forward, because Caltrain needs this, and I do want it to happen, but I don't feel comfortable going forward just yet. So if you could provide that study and share it with everyone, then that's how we will go forward, and we'll see you on February 17.
If I could just get one point of clarification and direction. We talked earlier about the likelihood of the TA funding something like this. Is there interest from council in staff making a formal proposal of the TA that they fund all or a portion of these alternatives?
I mean, if there's some feasibility to it, then I would make the ask.
Yes. Yes. So I would ask staff to reach out to the TA as well. One other thing, one other question for the city attorney. This is just me asking the Caltrain staff for another answer to my question, a question that came up from the public comment. When we bring this back, is this continuing this study session, or would that be a new study session?
New meeting item.
All right. Caltrain, do you have everything that you need from us to come back on the 17th?
Yeah, and I just want to say it one more time, because I don't want to confuse folks, you know, because we'll spend some time on our side to make sure we can provide technical answers, but we'll provide technical answers. It won't be, you know, official, you know, study. We'll just make sure that it's clearly understandable of all the technical reasons behind it. We just have different terminologies for different things, so I want to be as clear as we can here. We will provide technical rationale behind the two proposals that we're receiving from the community.
I think you've articulated exactly what I've asked for.
Great.
Is there any other additional comments by the council?
I just wanted to confirm that we're still being requested by Caltrain to respond by February 28. And without a response or decision on the council's part, my understanding based on the letter is that you will move forward with the original site location. Is that correct?
That's what we have in the letter.
Okay.
I think that's all that we need to accomplish tonight, so I'm going to close this special study session with the direction that we've given you, and we'll see you again on February 17.
Tuesday. Tuesday, the 18th.
It's a holiday. Drew, why did you lead me astray like that? I'll be here on the 17th. You all can be here on the 18th, I guess. I'll see you on the 18th. 18th. Thank you very much, and we'll make sure that when we receive your comments, that we'll distribute them to the neighborhood, so that everyone will have them. With that, I'm closing the special study session. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Rafael. At this time, we're not yet adjourning. We're going in closed session. So, and you have to announce that we pulled one of the items off the closed session.
Yes. Last item.
Last item, referencing the two claims, will not be heard in closed session tonight. That'll be postponed to a--
You're glad I reminded you of that.
I am, I am.
All right, then we will go into closed session at this time. When we're done with closed session, we'll come back and report out, and then we will adjourn.